We play in Frankfurt this weekend.
I'll make an order. God, please rise and I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on a business event before us this evening. Please join me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quick, please take the room.
Alderman Basso.
Here.
Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Begley.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Sit here, sit here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Mayor, City Clerk, Treasurer, and Attorney Officer.
All right, thank you. No special presentations tonight. Out of consent calendar, we've got three items. The approval of the city council meeting minutes from April 10th, 2022. The approval of the payroll and the voucher list for the period ending April 29th, 2022. And a motion to approve a request from the Payless Area Chamber of Commerce for a special events permit to conduct their majestic trail race run on Saturday, December 3rd, 2022, from 6:00 to 11:00 a.m. Race will be start on 125th, I'm sorry, 75th Avenue and continue to Lake Catherine going west down the Cal Sag Trail. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Move Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman Violet. Discussion, rule call.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
All right, no seal bits tonight that I'm aware of. Under my report, the first item earlier this evening, we had a special hearing for the vacation of some right aways. Basically, 68th Avenue right away from 125th to 127th. It was noted by some questions after the, from the council, the discussion with the residents that seemed to be in the best interest of the city to do so. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to authorize a city engineer and city attorney to draft the necessary plans of vacation ordinance required to vacate the remaining portion of 68th Avenue right away between 125th and 127th and attach to vacated right away to parcels along the 68th Avenue Court.
I'll make that motion.
Move Alderman McGovern, second by Alderman Key. Discussion, rule call.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
In the spirit of trying to get this thing done quickly, it's been dragging on since 1961. So if we could make someone make a motion to waive the rules. Move Alderman Violet.
Second.
Second by Alderman McGovern. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Then need a motion to adopt the necessary ordinances required to vacate the remaining portions of 68th Avenue right away between 125th and 127th and the attached right away parcels along the 68th Court. So move Alderman Key, second by Alderman McGovern.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And a question?
Yes, sir.
Just since we brought it up at the earlier meeting. Do you think we have to add in the fact that any fees associated with this will be picked up by the homeowner?
Sure.
They're not, I don't think they're gonna. No, no cost to the homeowners.
Oh, we're gonna, the city will absorb it?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
That's something new.
Rule call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, just to be, that's just not a new thing. We were given in our packets at the meeting that we just had. I think it was the last bullet point said there is absolutely no cost to the. I think it was, I know it was confusing when we had the open hearing, but it was a bullet point that we had already looked at.
And I think it would have only been fair if the people would have known that in advance of the meeting tonight.
Yes.
All right, that's all I have tonight. City Clerk.
No report.
City Treasurer.
Thank you, Mayor, no report.
Uh, City Attorney, thank you. All right, any communications?
Mr. Mayor, I have something. This past Saturday, the Payless Baseball Organization and Payless Power had a opening day parade to celebrate the opening day. It was very well attended.
It was a good time to have it, by the way, too.
Was that?
It was a good time to have it.
It was, we beat the rain by maybe an hour. But, you know, the, the, the street was packed with families of very excited kids getting back to normal, you know, to play ball. So just some special thanks to our Public Works and Police Department who, like always, were very professional and kind and all smiles and to the city council as well for all their help with that parade.
Any other communications, anyone here? All right, citizens wishing to address council, anyone? Yes, sir. Jesse.
Hi, I'm Jesse Blazek. I'm here on behalf of the Palestites Public Library. I'm the library director. I'm here because I wanted to take a moment to respond to some of the conversation that, that happened at the, the last city council meeting with regards to the library's current operations. There were some questions about our, our programming, why we're still doing virtual programming and I just wanted to put it out there that that the plan had been to do our, our in-person programming starting in January at once kids were able to get vaccinated. So many of our kids' programs are attended by, you know, young kids, their elderly caregivers, people who are exposed to older people. So we felt like having the kids vaccinated was an important thing. So the plan was for January. Omicron came around and kind of wiped out all that plan. We knew going into that, that this construction project was gonna, gonna start February or March. We weren't quite sure when at that point. But once, once we had to take a step back in January and continue the virtual programming, it only made sense to continue until the construction had started. Again, with the construction, we weren't entirely sure what space we were gonna have available, if we were gonna have meeting room space available, if we were gonna be storing lots of books and whatnot into it. We didn't know that until the, the day the movers came and we saw exactly how much was gonna be put into storage, how much was gonna be, whether we were gonna need to send things off, off-site for storage, what kind of space we were gonna be left with on the first floor. As it worked out, we, we decided to go ahead and bite the bullet and send, send a lot of things off-site to be stored so that we could keep our meeting room open. So this is late February, early March. And at that point, we, we started making plans to, to put the in-person program back into action. And that all took effect this month. It takes a little bit of time to get these things going, to get these plans moving. So our kids' programming, probably three-fourths, maybe 80% of it is now back in person again. It's a little different on the adult side. We've gotten a really strong response from adults that they really appreciate the, the virtual programming option, particularly in the winter, particularly when weather's bad. But so our, our plan on the adult side has been not to rush back the in-person until we have a good hybrid model that we can roll out. And so that's what we're working on right now. We're testing the, the hybrid setup right now to have in-person that we can also broadcast virtually. And it's, it's our hope that in June, we'll be able to kind of roll that out fully and have all of our, our programs on the adult side be both virtual and in-person so we can have maximum participation from, from everyone. So I just wanted to, to put, put the information out there. I also wanted to encourage you, if you're ever in doubt about the library's operations, please give me a call, stop by the library. A few of you stopped by after the last meeting and it was nice to be able to talk with you. But I'm, I'm always happy to talk about library operations and my door is always open. Thank you.
Thanks, Jesse, I appreciate it. Any other citizens wishing to address council? Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Deb Albrecht and I reside at 12042 South 75th Avenue. I have some notes, so bear with me. I'm here to talk about the lack of a safe pedestrian access on the east side of and into Community Park. We've lived on our corner at 121st and 75th Avenue since 1986 and proudly raised two kids here. We are witness every day to the parade of people making their way to the ballfields, pool, bike path, tennis courts, and more. Kids on bikes, parents with strollers, folks with pets, you name it. Even using the bike path to Lake Catherine is nice, too, because you can cross right at the light at Route 83. We were initially told when the access was blocked to make our way one block north to the driveway entrance on 120th Street. We should enter with the cars and Public Works vehicles. It wasn't a safe alternative then and it certainly isn't now, in my opinion. Imagine the cars in and out, all during the summer months. Pardon me. We really need our access back for safety sake. In addition to the access, I think we need to put stop signs back up, especially at the corner of 121st and 76th Avenue. We need stop signs all along 121st where we have a lot of pedestrians and a bus stop or two. We see cars speeding along both ways and we need to slow them down, especially since there is a higher pedestrian presence. I was told the cars have a right of way, but I say people and safety first. I don't think there is another park in Palestites Heights with this predicament. I'm not sure why we even have to fight for a safe access. It's just common sense. Thank you to all who support this issue and hopefully we can make it unanimous that we can open up this access for everyone. And thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi, everybody. I'm Jack Santa. I'm a neighbor of Debbie's. Live with my wife at 12032 75th Avenue. And we've been here for 30 years. We originally lived on 74th Avenue. And I just remember walking to the park with my daughter, who's 28, pushing her in a stroller around that park and being able to enter where we used to. And then when she got her first bike, you know, being able to enter the park there. And now I still enter the park, which, by the way, the park looks fantastic. You know, the Public Works went out, I was watching them for a couple of days this spring and they cut down a bunch of trees and geez, the woods just looks beautiful. And I noticed this because I walk most days with my dog now and I usually do like a circle. I enter near 120th Street and then walk behind the pool and everything and make a circle. And I really would like to some, I've been tempted at times to tear down that fence and just, you know, shoot out onto 121st Street. But instead you have to go at an angle and then you have to come back towards 121st Street. And the, the dog and I have, are slowing down a little bit and the cars, of course, do go pretty fast. And sometimes it looks like it's a, you know, clear opening, so I'm gonna make it no problem and somebody pulls out and they just shoot down that street. So I know that there was something with the state or something that they had to close off that entrance, but I always thought it was a bad move and I think, I think you should really think about opening it back up. And, and thanks, thanks again for everything you do. I really, I really like living in this community, I always have. And I appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katie Peiser. New address in Palestites. I recently moved from Ward 2 to Ward 2. 1235, uh, that's the old address, 12423 South 69th Court. Mr. Clifford, I emailed you about this today. I also am in support of removing the fence and the bushes. I have three young kids and I would love to allow them to ride their bikes to the pool. They're at the age where independence is a huge, exciting thing and being able to ride in the pool is, you know, an awesome thing come the summertime. And right now, wait, the way that that, the 76th is, it's, it's just too risky to have three kids ride their bikes. It's just not worth it. There's no other route from where we live. We would have to cross the street and the nice, amazing sidewalk along the, the newly constructed 123rd is, is a great option. But, you know, then having to route further along 76th Avenue, it's just too dangerous. It's a no-brainer to me. And I would imagine that there's other people in the community who feel the same.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Standing committees, reports, finance.
Mr. Mayor, no report other than the fact the city's in good financial shape and probably as good as any city in the state. Thank you.
All right, public safety, Alderman Basso.
Yes, Mayor, I have no items on the agenda this evening, but I would like to remind everyone in the audience and on TV to tune into the city website, to read the police safety reports and pick up some hints on how to stay safe and how to keep your children safe. I got my ARP magazine this week. I hope you're, anyone that qualifies as a member of ARP and can get this magazine because they have a special app on your phone that, I'm sorry, I was unprepared for our high technology today, but that you can, everyone can ring up for free and you'll get bi-monthly or bi-weekly, perhaps as bi-monthly, reports on the latest scams as, as researched and recorded by ARP. So I just joined that app today. So I'll let you know in two weeks or so how that's going and what tips I picked up and hopefully you can do the same. So that's the end of my report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Minister of Grounds and Property, Alderman Begley.
Thank you, Mayor, I have several motions this evening.
All right.
If everyone could just excuse my voice, I'm coming off of a cold here. But the first is a motion to approve payment to Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for professional services for the Cal Sag Trail at Lake Catherine from February 27th, 2022 to March 21st, 2022 in the amount of $8,639.78.
Move by Alderman Begley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski, discussion, rule call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
The next motion I have this evening, Mayor, is a motion to approve McLeod Aquatics to treat for algae and shara at Lake Catherine in the amount of $10,155.77. This is an annual expense we do.
Right, move by Alderman Begley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski, discussion, rule call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
My next motion is to approve the purchase of holiday decor for the Harlem Avenue lighting from Holiday Outdoor Decor in the amount of $8,840. This is the same company that we previously used, they just have a new name.
Okay, move by Alderman Begley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski, discussion, rule call.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Next, we have a motion to approve for planting of annuals and perennials behind Harlem Avenue businesses from CNC landscapes in the amount of $6,075.
Move by Alderman Begley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski, discussion, rule call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Question. Oh, no, yes, I know.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Next, we have a motion to approve payment to artistic holiday designs for holiday decorations in Community Park in the amount of $13,919.28. This was previously approved and we just haven't been.
Another year.
Yes.
Question on that one.
Let me get, get some motion here first. Move by Alderman Begley, second by Alderman Lewandowski.
Are these gonna, are they gonna change the decoder with different displays? Are they gonna be a standard each year of the same or same?
Those are gonna be the same that we, I think we agreed to a three-year, is my, is my understanding.
Same thing?
Same thing. And we can add as time goes on, but I think we have a motion, we have like an option to purchase after.
The only reason I was saying it, after a while it becomes repetition. People have seen it once, but something new each year, you know, more people may come to see it and if we kept changing it, you know.
Well, this was a, the prices was, was $37,000 and this is the second payment on that. So we can't add different things, but that would be in addition to this.
Either way, to make it a little different sort of, is it some kind of thing? Because it, you guys did take, when I took the picture over there, I think it was a great picture and that'd be on my next Christmas card.
Right.
I just was curious if we were gonna add or have the same thing after the contract's up or not.
I think the fine arts is suggesting that we do add on to it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
Rule call.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Next is a motion to approve removal of the split rail fence and 16 bushes on the east end of Community Park between 121st and 120th Street.
Move by Alderman Begley.
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski, discussion.
I have some, something to discuss regarding this mayor. You know, there was a theme tonight of what should have been done in 1961 and I think that's relevant to this particular discussion. I don't want to fast forward 50 years and say that we should have taken those bushes out 50 years ago. This is something that I think has developed into a bit of an urban myth as to why these bushes are there. And I think the source of the urban myth, I don't know, but there's a, there's this thought that the state is requiring us to have these bushes here. And I've done some research on it, I've had Public Works do some research on it and that simply is not borne out in the facts of what I've seen. So I invite everyone to discuss this this evening. We did bring this up in the committee last week and Alderman Violet kindly recommended that we bring this to the council, which I think is a good idea because this has had a long history. And so I think it's important that everyone takes a fresh look at this, uses some critical thinking on what we're doing here and how this is affecting our residents who are asking that we remove these bushes. There's been no agency in the state, no county, no state, no one is requiring that we have these bushes here. And I think that's just a really important fact because to rely on some mythological entity here to say that this is what we have to do when we have this decision-making power to do what's right for our citizens, I think is in our best nature. I think everyone's aware that there are 16 bushes and some fence that are placed along the east end of Community Park. It's obstructed the green space that's open there and people don't have just open access. Tonight, it's not on the table whether or not there's stop signs on 76th Avenue. It's not on the table whether or not there's crosswalks on 76th Avenue. So that's not really the discussion. The discussion is to, to open that up. And I would just ask that we, you know, we look at the actual facts of that. And I did receive several emails in support that are similar to what we received here tonight from the, from residents, just asking that this be opened up. I think a lot of you guys know, I've, I've been involved in a Facebook group for a number of years. I think it started back in 2011 or something. This is, it's called Moms of Palest. This is a topic that has come up so frequently. So it isn't exactly personal to me, my kids are almost grown now, they can get to the park however they get there. But this is something that I feel strongly about because the residents, it's something that bothers them and they have not been heard on the issue. They, there's no good explanation as to why these bushes are up. So yeah, that's kind of where, where I stand on it. Thank you.
Any other? Sure.
There was no vote on the committee on this matter because there was no motion. I wanted to bring this to city council because we've been having this discussion for a year. The first time this fence came up was May of 2021. I believe Alderman Begley's first meeting. She brought up the fence and brought up the bushes and brought up the crosswalk and the whole deal. Originally, I mean, this, the, the discussion has morphed from reopening the fence. At one time, there was a hole in the fence and Alderman Begley reminded us at the meeting on Tuesday that in 2015, the Building and Grounds Committee voted.
Discussed, discussed, not voted.
I thought, you know, Mike, when I, when I interrupt you. At meetings, whenever, at, at her meetings, whenever I say something like that, she always tells me not to do that. So I, I kind of rather that.
I just, I knew where you were gonna go with it, so I wanted to make sure that the record was straight.
Have you, haven't you told me not to interrupt you?
I did, but as soon as you said voted, I knew where we were going. I knew where there was some statement there, so.
Yeah, okay. In 2015, we discussed, at the recommendation of Scott Smith, we fixed the fence because there was a hole in the fence and the fence, the hole in the fence was put there by vandals. And Scott wanted the fence fixed partly because the hole was there and people were, you know, were getting through and they shouldn't, it's not an entrance to the park. Also, it was a safety concern because, because that fence sits about five to 10 feet from an, from an east-west portion of the bike path. So kids on their bikes could go through that opening right into 76th Avenue. And that was a danger. And so it was a, it was a concern of the committee in 2015 and that hole was fixed and I believe it was reinforced with another planting in front of it or something like that. The committee that discussed it at that time, Alderman Basso was the chairman, I was on the committee, Alderman McGovern was on that committee, Alderman Kromarski was also on that committee. Couple of weeks ago, after another one of these discussions, I stopped at the police station and talked to Chief Yatt and talked to Assistant Chief Yatt and talked to Assistant Chief Chetkowsky and asked them whether they saw the fence, which, by the way, is between 30 and 50 feet wide. I mean, it's, if it has any value, be, safety value in terms of the bike path. And they felt that it did. And I mentioned that at our last meeting, too, and it was kind of dismissed as hearsay because, because the police chief himself wasn't there in person to, to make that recommendation. In any case, there are, I mean, this committee's association with that fence has always been, as far as I remember, limited to safety. And we did have discussions about repairing the, the holes that were made by vandals. As far as why the fence is there, how 76th Avenue was constructed, the money's used to construct it, all of that involved the Federal Highway Authority. They paid for most of the construction of the street and a lot of what we do in that area involves IDOT. If anyone, any of the other Aldermen who were involved in the construction of all of this want to check in, I'm, that's, that's kind of it for me.
I'll take, I'll take, because I did make that motion at the Building and Grounds Committees to put those bushes up there. Because when 76th Street was completed, there was a requirement that took for a traffic safety study by a certified traffic engineer licensed by IDOT. And he was also the person that, I know this isn't part of it, but he was also the person that turned around and took away, took, took away all the stop signs going up and now at North and South because he made it through the street. at North and South because he made it a through street. And allowed all the different intersections to go from one hundred and twenty-seventh Street, no, one hundred and thirty-first Street, excuse me, all the way down to College Drive, and made only the east and west roads warranted for stop signs. Now, as far as the being put up there, the bushes were put up there because, and I have to go back a little bit on that also, so, excuse me, the intersection at one hundred and twenty-first Street, the prior intersection, I should say, we, we were, a traffic engineer told us that you cannot have that as an intersection. The reason for it is multiple. First, you have to have open access on both sides of the street in order for you to have an intersection. And that, open access on the west side is that, cannot be done, because if you walk and go across the street, you're, you're on somebody else's private property.
Excuse me, are you meaning, you said, you keep saying intersection, are you meaning crosswalk, were you trying to say, or?
Crosswalk, excuse me, thank you very much.
Okay.
Um, now, when the IDOT traffic engineer finished his report, he insisted that those bushes go up because we cannot allow people to walk across that, the state will not allow us, and if we do allow us, we lose our insurance. We lose the insurance from the Federal Highway Administration, and we lose any, any and all insurance from IDOT, or whichever one of, I believe I have nine or ten federal agencies, all of which have to throw some little nook and cranny of a law in, in, into their program, this program before it gets completely finished. Now, the most major of all of them was the fact that, that walkway cannot be done because there's no way you can get a depend, a, an ADA person to walk, to go across the street into the park. Now, as far as the bushes go, the bush, bushes were man, were damaged multiple times out of the, uh, in, in the evenings, and it was brought to our attention that the only way we're going to turn around and stop this vandalism, which, in my point of view, was done nothing by a bunch of vigilantes, and I'll be very honest about it, it came very short, in my opinion, for the size of this town, as being a small little group of urban terrorists, as far as I, my feelings go. Now, so, because it cannot be approved by ADA, you cannot put that walkway there. The fence was put there to stop everybody from damaging all the bushes. And I have written several times about this. I, it was actually published in the Regional, and that was on September, was it, the twelfth? September twelfth, twenty fifteen. The then, the then reporter, Jack, uh, Jack Murray, talked to me about it after a meeting. I showed him my notes, and he published them word for word on the front page of the Regional. And this is the actual front page itself. Now, there were also three other articles in the Regional about this. One height, one starts off with the safety concerns, don't stop on Seventy-sixth Avenue. Another one, city's pulls all, pulls all stops on Seventy-sixth Avenue because the FAU route means it's a through street. And the fourth one actually says Mayor Strauss was hoping that we could turn around and get some, uh, some of the stop signs back on Seventy-sixth Street and at one hundred and twenty-third Street. Now, the stop sign on one hundred and twenty-third Street had to be taken off because it was taken off on a traffic study in two thousand and five, and they put it right back on, and we were actually reprimanded by the, by the IDOT for putting that four-way stop back up there. The one on one hundred and twenty-first Street, where the stop signs were, were initially taken off after the first traffic study also, except we never turned around and had the ordinance put on to take that signs down, which we did in twenty fifteen, at the, at the end of it. Now, that roadway was a four million, five hundred thousand dollar program, which I believe you went through the stop loss conference as a mayor to get to, uh, the Federal Highway Association, so we got the federal government to finance over seventy percent of it.
Right. Well, you know, and I, I've heard both three or four different opinions here, and then, you know, heard opinions of the, some people in the audience, and, and we want the safety. That's, I think the safety of the residents is above most importance, you know, and, you know, we've come back with some ideas, we've done it this way because, you know, the government said this, government said, is it now not time maybe to look and see how we can achieve this and actually do this, and get it done the right way so we don't have these problems? I mean, look at it another time, and, uh, maybe there's ways, this area, this whole area could be redesigned, you know, to comply with the regulations, you know, that are out there, yet give people access to the park, and make it safe for residents. I mean, I think, you know, maybe that should be the charge of, you know, and, and, you know, again, we, we need to keep up with, with the, you know, the, the guidelines are, but let's, let's try to look, using the guidelines to get the thing accomplished the right way, uh, and make everybody happy, I just, I mean, I, so that's, that's me.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I, I agree with what you're saying, but the, the fact remains that, you know, the, the fence and the bushes are there for decoration and to have a eastern edge to the park, you know, the reason, it, it, there was a, what people like to refer to as an entrance, it was never an entrance to the park. It was a, uh, you know, a style of the fence was removed because it's easier for people to walk in, but the fact of the matter is, it's not an entrance to a park, you're walking through a culvert. Um, IDOT and other agencies are loathe to put any kind of sidewalk bike path that leads to nowhere because the kids will come down that bike path, as, uh, Alderman Beigle said, and go right out into the street. And so, it, it is a safety issue, and so that's why it's there, so.
Well, I understand, and I'm, and I'm saying that, you know, it-
And if there's another way, I'd be glad to look at it.
Maybe there's a different way to do it.
However, as it stands right now, every intersection on Seventy-sixth Avenue has stop signs. All the comments that keep on saying, you've removed the stop sign. The only stop signs that were removed were going north and south at one hundred and twenty-third, but every intersection has stop signs. It's just that Seventy-sixth is a through street. There's stop signs coming east and west at every intersection, and then the other thing is, once you, so, to, to come to the park, if you're going to enter that part of the city, you're going to either walk, drive, or ride your bike on a street, because we don't have sidewalks. So, you're already on the street. So, if you measure from where the hole in the fence was to the end of the fence, and I'm not going to sit here, I didn't talk it off, but it's probably thirty or fifty feet, so, all this consternation is over walking.
I agree.
Fifty feet, which is why I'm loathe to change anything. I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to vote to have bushes and fence taken down because someone doesn't want to go fifty more feet to enter the park. It's just, it, it makes no sense, and, and the city always acts to protect itself.
I agree.
And God forbid someone come off that path into Seventy-sixth Avenue and get hit. I'm not going to be part of that. I just, and, and that's the reason I'm voting away. And, and then, thirdly, if we're going to investigate a healthy way of entering the park, then it should be going through the Parks, Parks Committee.
I, that may be where it should go, I, I'm just saying, should we look at this a different way?
But this is, this has been looked at at parks, it's been looked at at safety, it's been looked at at roads, and it has, it has been looked at, at, um, Alderman Begley's, so there's been four different committees looking at this, which in and of itself almost seems ludicrous.
I agree.
That there should be a comprehensive plan, and then take all these legal matters, and, and then maybe we'll get to, you know, what is it, you know, what's legal, or what are they loathe to do? It's two different things.
Well, and, you know, we keep hearing about this report, I would just like to see this report.
The report I read today, if you want, I can, I can tell you today. The report has nothing to do with bushes at all. The report was simp, was, it was put down by Mr. Vanderweild, and it was regarding the stop signs. So, Mr. McGovern said tonight that he told him that bushes should be placed, but I think if we're going to make decisions like this for a decade in the city of Pelus Heights, that we should have something that's documented.
Yeah, I just wanted- Mr. Mayor, um, this is, this is my word as well. I did get a couple emails, um, before this meeting in support of taking down the fence, and I just want to pan out just a little bit in the similar fashion that you did. I'm very happy to hear, um, everyone having a robust discussion about safety in our town. You know, again, Lake Catherine's in our ward as well. Um, I'd love to have that discussion about the safety of having the bike rack on the road, uh, at a, at a future point, and safety is paramount, uh, to myself, and I know Alderman Begley as well. Um, and I, panning out, we heard it from our residents today, and I heard it in emails, it's just, um, the, the question, the problem is, um, access to the park, to our community park, to a public park, and there, there is a, a fence and bushes that are obstructing , uh, the residents from entering the park for approximately, I mean, we'll get a measurement at some point, fifty feet, eighty feet, whatever it is. To address the entrance issue, yes, you can't, you're not going to enter that park on a bike or walking with that fence there, but at the very end of the fence, that's where I enter the park, and that's where everybody who's walking their dog or riding their bike enters the park. So we've moved the entrance down fifty, eighty feet, whatever it is. Again, the, the, the value of the fence for, for the safety value, um, you know, of course that's an important discussion, but it's, it's the way that that discussion happens, you know. Again, I'll go back to the, is there value to move the bike rack, or the bike path off the, the road in Lake Catherine? I'm sure, you know, the police would say, yeah, get the bike path off the road. Um, I'm, I'm a little confused by some of the stuff that came up today, but I think that that's getting a little bit too much into the weeds about, I don't know what insurance that we would lose, I don't know who we're insured by, or what insurance, um, is part of that fence. Um, I know we got into the, the discussion about the stop signs and, and whatnot, you know, the motion tonight is about the, the split rail fence and the sixteen bushes. Um, ch, 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 pardon me, because I was, I was trying to take notes as I was going, because I, I do enjoy listening to all the perspectives and the history here. Um, the, the, the other thing is, the, I just want, I just wanted to be clear, um, and I, I don't know the record, uh, as well as Alderman Begley does, about the requirements and the traffic engineering and the, uh, licensed by IDOT, um, that, that, uh, wrote us, that said that we need a fence there and bushes, or bushes and then the fence, um, and so on and so forth, I'll let Alderman Begley address that, or maybe we need, um, some more background in this, strictly speaking to the bushes and the fence, and strictly trying to solve the issue of just access to the public park. Um, so that's kind of panning out, all, all the other stuff is just, we're trying to solve a problem of our residents, espes, especially in the third ward who live east of Seventy-sixth Avenue, having access to the park on foot or on bike.
Yeah, I, I just may it clear, I don't think the answer is taking those bushes and fence out right now. I think the question is addressing that whole southeast area of the park as far as making it a better entrance at some way, and, you know, I'm not sure how it is yet, but if there's going to be an entrance there, address that whole corner as to how to make it safe and accessible to everybody, you know, going into the park. So that, that does my point, I'm trying to make.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just make to make one more point, please.
Sure.
I'm going to show you a picture. Okay, that's a picture of a traffic accident about four months after this fence was put up. It was a woman that was driving down one hundred, uh, man or a woman, I got to double check. Anyway, someone was driving down one hundred and twenty-seventh Stu, uh, on Seventy-sixth Street, and they had a shift out of the way of another car, and they ran into the bushes, knocked down the entire fence. And this is during the daytime, so thank God there were no kids walking around, and, or anyone walking around past it. If that, those bushes were not there, if that fence was not there, we'd be wor, a heck of a lot more worried about anything else. As far as Seventy-sixth Street goes, there have been fifteen accidents on Seventy-sixth Street since the year two thousand, and that goes all the way from College Drive, all the way up to one hundred and thirty-fifth Street. Of those accidents, two of them have been personal injury. This one, and another person that turned around and hit a tree up the, up, up the road a little farther up. I would not want to be around this with my grandchildren, who are Pelus Heights residents.
Jack, did you hear something?
Yeah, um, I wish I'd rose at the time when Alderman Kromarski chaired this, but it, uh, with the road construction and everything, there were certain criteria that was authorized or requested by, and I have a report that Alderman Begley also received that I was CC'd on from our Public Works Director on the, the issue of this thing. Uh, is there a need there, or somehow, that tonight's not the idea to come up with a design standard, or find out how to do that? Maybe after this meeting, we'll go back and address that, but for right now, the question at hand is if you're going to take that down or not. As a gentleman said over here, in all due respect, said, well, I was tempted to vandalize or tear down that fence myself. Well, that's city property, and more than likely, you probably would have been arrested. But the thing is, it's city property, it was put there for a reason and that, and according to this, we met all the, the criteria of, uh, what's going on here. And Scott, our Public Works Director at the time, brought this up after certain things went here, and there was a big hole of, uh, the bushes being trotted down, that a fence be put there to quit, basically, keep them from trotting over that, and, uh, the bushes and everything, so that, that was part of it too. But according to Communicate here, it says on March twenty-second, uh, two thousand and twenty-two, the municipal grounds and property meeting, the topic of one hundred and twenty-first Street and Seventy-sixth Avenue intersection was discussed under all business. The residents of Ward Three are interested in having a crosswalk and entrance to Community Park installed at this intersection, which was removed when Seventy-sixth Avenue was resurfaced in two thousand and eight. In order to evaluate the topic further, the following information was gathered regarding previous improvements in the area prior to nineteen, two thousand and eight. Seventy-sixth Avenue had stop signs located at one hundred and twenty-first, second, and third, and fourth Street along unmarked crosswalks at local points of connection, existing bike path on one hundred and twenty and one hundred and twenty-first Street. During the road construction in two oh eight, two oh nine, those stop signs were removed, and unmarked crossings were eliminated due to the design requirements of the Federal Aid FAU Minor Collector Roadway Program. In mid nineteen ninety, the city of Pelus Heights had petition, was petitioned to have Seventy-sixth Avenue classified as an FAU minor collector, and obtained federal funding to redesign and reconstruct Seventy-sixth Avenue Route Eighty-three, College Drive, to one hundred and thirty-fifth, Thirty-Fifth Street. In two oh three, Morris Engineer prepared a project development report for the reconstruction of Seventy-sixth between College Drive and one hundred and twenty-seventh. One of those requirements in the report was to justify the multi-way stop sign on Seventy-sixth Avenue, um, was to justify each multi-way stop sign along Seventy-sixth Avenue, since none of the existing stop signs along Seventy-sixth Avenue met the design requirement of the man- Since now the existing stop signs along 76th Avenue met the design requirement of the manual on uniform traffic control devices, MUTCD, they were removed with the project and were never reinstalled. The report also required that the design of full ADA crosswalks for all proposed existing roadway crossings at 120th Street and 121st Street. These crossings were eliminated from the project since community park and the bike path have ADA access from the parking lot, and no public sidewalks were present in the vicinity of 120th Street and 121st Street that would warrant ADA access to the park from that location. Most importantly, uh, once the 76th Avenue reconstruction was completed, residents continued to utilize the intersection of 121st and 76th to the entrance of the park, as an entrance to community park, to comply with the approved design, which included the elimination of roadway crossings. The city installed a wooden fence to ensure the residents utilized the main park entrance eliminated, uh, and eliminated any potential non-compliance issues and hazards of having a non-ADA compliant unmarked crosswalks to the park. In order to continue receiving Federal Aid award, uh, roadway projects, the city must stay compliant with the approved Illinois Department of Transportation standard, and it goes on and on, basically same thing. But when you cross over there, and you walk down the grass, you go ahead and go down there, you can create into that park. You don't have to come down here to where the public work trucks and that come out. Nobody's forcing you to go there. You can walk right into the paved out path and go in that way, and that's the question of 35, 40, or 80 feet, or whatever it is, and that's, we can discuss later, appropriate meetings, road constructions, or, uh, buildings and grounds, how you want to address that. But right now, I know you didn't board with it, but you had, well, you shook your head like that, but the thing is. No, yeah, who, yeah? But whatever. But the thing is, you yourself had come up with a plan about trying to put a sidewalk to come off that bike path, to come down in front of the bushes and, I think, to connect to Coach Road, am I right or wrong?
Right, right.
Well, that's a solution, maybe, not now, but later, that you had come up with, and maybe that's something that could be viable to, to rectify the problem, I don't know. But right now, the question's right now, are you, are you, are you not going to take this down? The answer's probably no, or is going to be no.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be brief, but just, you know, sitting here, it seems like we've all had an opinion. Um, I think that two of the comments that I focused on, and I, I think, you know, it's a tough issue, it's always one of the things that you've always learned by sitting up here, is many times, you know, it's hard to believe, but sometimes both sites are right, but I, I really do think that some of the comments that Alderman Key made about, over the last, you know, five to 10 years, four or five committees have, like, looked at it, they've all come up with pretty much, I think, the same conclusion, is maybe safety is a little bit more important than convenience, and that kind of ties in with the comments that Alderman, uh, Bywell made during his remarks at the very beginning, where he said, which I think are, are the really, for me, was the most important things, we entrust the police for, like, all of our safety, and all the residents' safety, and all our kids' and grandkids' safeties, and to hear that in his discussions with Chief Yatt and Deputy Chief Chikowski, who were both have been here for a long time, know the city like the back of their hand, you know, to have them say that they think it's a safety concern, you know, I think, you know, we have a police department, we're paying them, you know, all of us residents are paying them for our safety, we should listen to them, and, because chances are, they know more than all of us anyhow, sitting here to vote, because that's their job, and that's their profession. So, you know, I would almost leave it up to the experts, and if it's safety over convenience, I'd go safety every time.
Mr. Mayor, one, one last comment on that. So, I, I appreciate what Alderman McGrogan said. With, with that being said, I think, I think it'd be very beneficial to the entire, entire city council, to, to the public and yourself, if, if we asked Chief Yatt to reduce it to writing his recommendation on the safety standards of this fence and bushes and all, and have Adam weigh in as well. So, with that in mind, I'd like to ask that and, and make a motion to defer this to the next city council meeting.
The motion's been made and seconded. I call the question.
Uh-huh. You can defer it.
You know, Mr., in all fairness, Chief Yatt is in a safety aspect, according to the guidelines of what we've been given here from Adam, I mean, he made an opinion that he thought it would be a safety issue, so I don't know if you want to, can hold him by any.
Adam said we could take the bushes out in that report, that Adam actually indicates in there, that's where we got this information, was Adam said to take the bushes and fence out. So, I second the motion. I also spoke to Chief Yatt, and it's, he had a differing opinion of what you said.
Okay, so motion's made by Alderman Ludowski, seconded by Alderman Begley, to defer it back to committee. No, no. Defer to the next, I'm sorry, defer to the next meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Motion's deferred. Next?
I actually have one final thing on the agenda tonight, I forgot about this little guy. Um, so, we had a motion to approve installation of a bike rack at City Hall up as well.
Who, are you moving, begin that motion?
We're moving.
Second. Moved by Alderman Begley, seconded by Alderman Ludowski. Discussion?
I'd like to, uh, refer that back to committee.
Second.
Okay.
Take the vote, defer.
You're referring, or do you?
Are you sending it back to our committee again?
Pardon me?
Are you sending it back to our committee?
Yeah, he's referring it back to.
Back to committee.
Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, good. Okay. Anything else? Alderman Begley?
Uh, nothing further, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Planty Zoni, Alderman McGovern.
Uh, oh, Planty Zoni, go ahead. No report, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Key, recreation?
Uh, no report, Mr. Mayor.
Roads to construction?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. 123rd Street's continuing with the punchless and the side of the road issues, installing , um, uh, stone and, uh, re, uh, support in some of the culverts. The asphalt plants will be up to full speed soon, so some, uh, serious patching will be started, will be done around, around town, and, uh, shortly be starting the road program throughout town. Also be aware that the, uh, One Lane in either directions on the bridge over Route 83 in Ridgeon will be closed for some time, at least the most of the summer, if not in the next year. Uh, other than that, that's it.
All right. That's the purpose of franchises. Alderman Ludowski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no items this evening.
All right. Alderman Bywell, water, sir?
No report.
All right. Business and economic development, Alderman Key?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we have an adopt a pot program that's part of the Beautification Committee, and the beautiful plantings that go all over the city, along the business district, at Lake Catherine, at the rec department, everywhere, and families and businesses and groups can sponsor those pots. If you're interested, they're $80 to sponsor one, you can just contact City Home, we'll get you, um, in contact with the appropriate people for that. Uh, the, those pots are going to be planted on May 21st, which is a Saturday, at 8:00 in the morning, and so if you're interested in coming up and helping us plant those, you're more than welcome, it's, uh, they'll be planted at the city pool, and, like I said, it's right at 8:00. And then, uh, next week starts the farmer's market on Wednesday, and so we're glad to have that reopen, and it'll be open until probably mid-October, I believe it is, every Wednesday, and, um, glad that's up and running again. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Cable TV, Alderman McGovern?
No report this morning.
Any old business?
Mr. Mayor, I have an, I don't know if it's old business or new business, so you'll forgive me. I think it's old business. Alderman Begley and myself had coffee and conversation with our constituents in Lake Catherine, uh, too long ago, and they brought up the safety issue of the bike path being on the street. Um, do you have any guidance on what, what committee that, that could be addressed at?
Let me check on it, let you know.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
That came out of roads.
I have one other comment on the new business.
Okay.
Okay. 135th Street, from Harlem to One Black East of La Grange, is going to be in construction from May until the end of June.
Right.
They're going to put a two-inch resurface, and then they're going to, they're going to do some other stuff, stuff all around there too. So, just to be aware, if you're going to go across 135th Street, it's going to be very slow, if it's raining, it'll be a lot slower, especially if you got to come from Ridgeon.
Yeah, we, we sent out a blast, the social media blast last week on that to all the residents, so.
And there'll be notifications up at some of the subdivisions that crosses, like where Harlem lives and that.
Citizens wish to ask questions?
Harlem White Bull to 7640 West 135th Street, Orland Park. Uh, just to, I, I was just listening, and, and when I heard Alderman Clifford talking and, and Alderman McGovern talking about, uh, the stop signs on 76th Avenue that were removed because it's a through street, and I heard a citizen that was talking about putting, putting the stop sign back, I thought, you know, just out of curiosity, uh, if you go through the town of La Grange, or some of the other western suburbs, they have through streets such as Route 45, and they have stop signs that say, stop if you see a pedestrian. So, that might be a way of getting around the IDOT issue and appeasing your residents.
Okay, go ahead, thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mayor, can I motion to adjourn? A move? All favor?
Aye.
Go.